At this time, we'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. We're gonna ask Reverend Rudy Howard, pastor of Protestant Baptist Church of Palacka, to lead us in the invocation, and also can you lead us in the pledge as well? Good one, please state it this time.
Fathers, we've taken come this time, Lord. We just thank you for your word that says, "This is the day that you've made where to rejoice and be glad in," Lord. Lord, we thank you for allowing us to come on this rainy night, and we thank you for the rain. Lord, we ask you to just take in at this moment, Lord, let the Holy Spirit just continue to take control, that we can just take and open our eyes to see the unity of what you want us to do. Lord, look, open our ears, that we can hear what one another has to say, but, Lord, let us come into agreement as one. Lord, let us just have a hope in mind that we can take and look at the things that you want us to do, and, Lord, just seek your will. Lord, we thank you for this day, and, Lord, most of all, just fill our hearts with your joy and your love, in your son's precious name. Amen.
Amen.
If you would. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Howard? Also, we wanna mention that Pastor Howard is our former fire chief, and we thank him for all of his years of service here with the city of Palacka. So, let's give him a round of applause. Roll call, please.
Mayor Carrollfield.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mary Lohm Graham. Commissioner Rizas Bora.
Present.
Commissioner Justin Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner Candy McCaskill.
Here.
Members of the President and accounted for, we have a forum. Moving on to the approval of our minutes. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second. There's a motion on the floor, and a second. Is there any further discussion? Questions called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item one of the agenda, which is our public recognition and presentation. First up, Mr. Deputy. Mr. Deputy's gonna bring us to 2018 Christmas Parade, November 23rd, 2018, Downtown Palacka Inc.
Good evening, Sam Deputy. 917 Carl Street, Palacka. This Christmas parade is coming up, and we did some research in the Palacka Daily News morgue and in the archives, and we think we can go back to 1909 with the City of Palacka Christmas Parade, on the Friday after Thanksgiving. So, you know, it's a tradition that is ingrained in our psyche here, and a lot of people come home for Thanksgiving, and, you know, families gather and come downtown, so we really do appreciate all the support that we get. This year, I'm gonna give you some posters. Linda Myers is our parade marshal. We try to honor someone that each year that has done a tremendous amount of volunteer work within our community, and we wanna honor her for the years of years of volunteer work, and also for the fact that through her Dunkin' Donuts, she built habitat houses for our city, et cetera, and there's a lot of good that's come from her and her family, so we're excited about that. For 2019, I can announce that we will be honoring John Alexander for his tremendous work that he's done in this community in the past, and for what he is doing currently for the mural committee and moving that forward, so we wanna honor him for next year. This year's parade is set, I believe that all 221 spots will be filled early, and I'm anticipating a little bit of a waiting list. We have groups already from Deland, St. Augustine, Fernandina, Keystone, Gainesville, Salt Spring, they're coming from all over, so we're excited to have them and to host them. We believe that we average about 17,000 in the parade, at the parade, and another 3,000 in the parade. So, what I need to know is your attendance, so I can book that and make a space for that. And for our interim city manager, we would love to have you and Susan Wilson, if I can publicly make that invitation. We would love to have you two in the parade as part of the dignitaries at the front. City managers have been in our Christmas parade before, and we, there's an etiquette that we follow, and a hierarchy that we follow, always the city of Palacka goes before the county, because we are city residents, and so each area, city always precedes the county, and so we would love to have you in it if you so choose, and I'll talk to you about that.
I will pass that on to Susan Wilson also.
Okay, I would appreciate that.
Thank you.
It's like a Facebook post.
Mr. Deputy, what other events are you involved in, in the city right now?
Too many, but we're working heavy on the Azalea Festival right now, and Boo on the Avenue, which is Wednesday, will have over 60 spots to trick or treat. We're anticipating 1,500 children and 600 parents.
How long have you been on Boo on the Avenue?
This'll be my fifth year.
And how many years have you been doing the parades and festivals?
I moved here in '03. I've been doing it since '03, yes.
And so, you told us recently that it was your last year doing what?
Next year is my last year on the Christmas parade, and I hope to be standing at this podium giving you the award.
And since it's your last year doing this stuff, next year, we always wanna make sure that we say thank you for the efforts that you give us. And so, for those who don't know Sam Deputy, Sam Deputy's the guy who's gonna tell you when it's right, he'll tell you when it's wrong, but he loves Palacka.
Loves.
And he's worked tirelessly in this community, for Downtown Palacka Inc., with our CRA district. He gives back to this community, heard the events that he's involved in. He's been the chair of the Azalea Festival for many years, he's been back, and he's exactly what we wanted in Palacka, somebody who gives back, somebody who tells us continuously that there's moss in the trees downtown, or that there's a limb that needs to be trimmed, or the tree is limp, but he also tells you how much he loves this community, and he shows you in his efforts and the things that he does, and he does those for free, and that's what we want everyone in this community to look at. It's about being a good neighbor, it's about being a good citizen, it's about setting an example for our young people, and for that, Sam, I know we give you a hard time sometimes, but today, you're up for lack of pride, hometown hero, and we have this award for you, and presented to Sam Deputy. And basically, the day you're here, it means that you're a successful city of Palacka, and you're the deputy of the Palacka City Commission and Staff, October 25th, 2018. He's also a small business owner in downtown, so again, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have comments?
Thank you.
I wanna say thank you, Father, that you do, not only for me, but for our city, and just for that surprise.
Thank you.
Conversation that we had the other day.
Yes, thank you, I appreciate that very, very much. And yes, we do love our city.
Right. I like to echo that same sentiment, and Sam, he also serves on our CRA board as well, in addition to, what's the other board? But long story short, Sam, he's really invested in this whole, in this community, and we certainly thank him for everything that he does.
Thank you.
Thank you again, sir.
Anybody else?
Yes, I, I know Sam is a kid sometime, and I wanna, I wanna thank somebody else, I wanna thank his mama, 'cause she really keeps him in line, and she's the joy of his life, and I think he needs to be awarded, 'cause he takes care of his mom too, I wanted to add that to what's here, and congratulations.
I too wanna thank Sam, I can tell you, it's never a dull moment when you walk into his business, he always has something for you, but I wanna thank you personally for the things that you've done as well as the commission, I appreciate you.
Sam and I are classmates from the class of 1975, Palacka South High School. I've known Sam since middle school, or maybe even before, because we, our families have always been friends, and so, and your lovely mom, and of course, your dad, who we'll all never forget, but thank you so much for everything that you've done.
We just wanna say, we could live and have lived a lot of places, but we choose to live here, because the people here are much, it's a much better place than the big city, so it's a great place. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Next up, student of the month, Mr. Borum. All right, let's roll it. This is our fun time, this is the only time we get to see all the seats filled when there's nothing controversial going on. There's always happy faces in the room. I wanna make sure that I take this time out, so, how many veterans do we have in the room today? Make sure that, while our members raise your hand, stand up at this time, I wanna thank you for your service to this country. Thank you for your service. I also have a Palackan that I see kinda sitting in the, in the wings here from the class of 1964 of Central Academy. Ms. Ida was a, she was, she lives in Panama City now, she came by for her 54th Black reunion, and they were devastated by Hurricane Michael, but she's here, she's here in great spirits, and she brings a lot of history, a lot of Black pride, so I would stand up for us at this time. You're the family of the community at this time, and we're just glad to see you back in Palacka, and we know that you're, no matter where you are, you're involved in process, and you're involved in, and you're giving back, so definitely.
Thank you.
Student of the month, the first people we wanna recognize, before we recognize the students, are our teachers, and often times, we never get an opportunity to tell our teachers thank you, and so, this is one of the few times that we get an opportunity to truly tell them thank you for all the work that they do, for the investments that they make into our young people. So, we have our educators in the room at this time, would you guys please stand and wave your hand, they're somewhere between the hallway and the seats. Next up are all the family members, and friends, and neighbors, and grandparents who are here today, waiting for me to be quiet, so the kids can get awards, and they can take pictures, so would you guys please stand at this time? It takes a village to raise a child, and without you, it would not be possible. And now, we're ready to recognize the true honored guest of today, our young people. So, as we, because we continue with the process, we'll have each student come forward, we will line up across the front of the room, we will have the representative from each school come forward as well. Once we get everyone's name called correctly, or I'll butcher at least two, that's normally the way it works. What we'll do after that is we'll take a recess, so that you can take pictures and memorialize this time for the achievements of your loved one. And so, first up.
Well, when you first come up, you'll shake the mayor's hand, and you'll walk around to the end of the table here, and then, as we continue to receive people, we'll just either stack double, or what have you, but we'll line up around the horn, so you'll know where you're placing, placing that you come up.
Mr. Borum's a process guy, he has to make sure everything is spelled out, that's what he does. First up, from Brownie Chris Elementary, Jasmine Simpson. Next up, CLO 6th Grade Center, Yannisha Agron Lopez. I imagine I butchered. Next up, Children's Reading Center Charter School, Daylon Evans. From the 8th Miller School, Aiden Taylor. From J.J. Long Elementary, Travis Journey. From Jenkins Middle School, Anna Cordova. And Coach D.
You want this? You deserve it.
From Melon Elementary, Olivia Ann Cologne. From Palacka High School, Clayton Suprel. From Putnam Academy of Arts and Sciences, Amaris.
That's not about me.
She has hair.
From Putnam High School, Casey Mae James. We also. And so, young people, we are extremely proud of you, and I'll leave you with a saying, I've been saying this for the last four years, and will continually say it, because I started saying it when I was in the third grade with Miss Crean, where we'd say it every day was for school, and it stuck with me till this day, I'm 46-years-old, and it simply says, "I am somebody, if my mind can conceive it, and my heart can believe it, I know I can achieve it, because I am somebody." You guys are somebody special, you're somebody destined for greatness, and we're proud of you, we love you in this community, and we're looking for more great things from you. Continue to do well in school, continue to do well as citizens and represent this community, and we just love you for it, so thank you very much, we're proud of you. So, at this time, we will take a brief recess, we're gonna ask all the students to remain, we'll ask the educators to step out, so that we can take a picture for the newspaper, and for every family member, and we'll take our time to make sure that we commemorate this moment for you. Thank you very much. You got it, mostly biased. I'm gonna take a wild mess there, Ryan, if you're okay.
We're missing, we're missing.
Nothing better? I'm gonna get it right. Come on up. Come on up, Ryan. Front row, you guys are in the front row. And so, all right, so this is where we're gonna go, over to item two of the agenda, which is our public comment, public comments will be limited to three minutes, no actual will be taken on items of discussion. If you wanna, if you wanna speak during public comment, please pull out a yellow speaker's card in the back of the room, so that we will have your information for the record. Is there anyone here for public comment? We have one speaker card, it's Ms. Elektra Kitchens, please come forward, Ms. Kitchens.
Elektra Kitchens, 1027 South 12th Street, Palacka, Florida. You all probably got invitations, but as a member of the Putnam County Historical Society, I'd like to invite you personally, each of you and your significant others, to the society's tea and talk event this Saturday, October 27th, at the Bronsonville Holland House. Tickets are $25 for adults and $15 for children 10 and under. This cost covers the admission to the show, the tea and tea service, and light lunch. Sarah Heatherton, who's been a culinary instructor at First Coast Technical College in St. Augustine, is overseeing the tea sandwiches, safelies, and sweets, including her special recipe, Bronson House fudge, that'll be a big interest of mine especially. Seating is limited, which is why there are two teas, one at 10:30 and one at 2:30. For tickets, please call Mrs. Jean Russell at 386-654-0103, or 386-492-1309, or go online as we event write. Dress is your choice of casual or dressy, but please be dressed. Diane Jacoby will be portraying Mary Lily Kenneth Flagler in one of her one-woman show. Mary was the third and last wife of Nathan A. and St. Augustine developer Henry Flagler, and was once known as the world's richest woman. Diane portrays her with charm as she lets Mary Lily tell her own story and gossip about it. The Putnam County Historical Society is holding the teas as fundraisers to help maintain items in the Bronsonville Holland House. The city owns the house and the grounds, but the contents belong to or are on loan to the Putnam County Historical Society. Each year, we get several thousand visitors to the house, and with that comes a responsibility to maintain the items, so that we can show people how people live. We have some furniture that needs repair, and we're looking at recovering a couch, and recovering the couch. Some of the money may be used for acquisitions. We recently had the opportunity to buy a hotel register from the Putnam House. It's one of only three we know of, we have one of the others. This one includes the signatures of luminaries such as Patifanese, there artists and designers, Clara Barton, the nursery founder of the American Red Cross, and many others who visited Palacka and stayed at the Putnam House, and I hope each of you will come to the tea, bring your wife, or your mother, or your girlfriend, or your boyfriend, or whatever, and have a good time, as you part of the Bronsonville House, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kitchens. Moving on to, moving on to item three of the agenda, consent agenda. On this week's consent agenda, we have items A through G, does everyone have an opportunity to review the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second. There's a motion on the floor, and a second. Is there any further discussion? Questions called, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Is that A through H, or do I have to...
A through G?
I fixed it.
You fixed it.
I let that be.
A through G.
They all might have fixed it.
Moving on to item number four. Item number four, public hearing, planning board recommendation to Annex 3301 Crean Avenue, and rezoned from Putnam County C2 Commercial to R1A Residential, C2 Intensive Commercial, Lanell Wall Animal Medical Clinic, applicant. Item A, annexation ordinance, first reading.
First reading, the clerk directed reading of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Palacka, Florida, annexing into the corporate limits of the City of Palacka, Florida. Certain adjacent territories identified as 3301 Crean Avenue, located in Section 11, Township 10, South Range 26 East, public records of Putnam County, Florida, contiguous to the boundaries of the City of Palacka, and providing an effective date."
There's a motion on the floor, and a second. Is there anyone here for public hearing? See no one here for public hearing, we'll close public hearing. Any further discussion?
Question.
Questions called, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item B, rezoning ordinance, first reading.
So, clerk, an ordinance of the City of Palacka, Florida, providing that the official zoning map of the City of Palacka, Florida, be amended from Putnam County C2 Commercial and R1, R-1A Residential Single Family to City C2 Intensive Commercial, for the following property, 3301 Crean Avenue, Section 11, Township 10, South Range 26 East, providing for separability, and providing an effective date.
So, move. Second. There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Borum, and a second by Commissioner McCaskill. Now, on the floor, for public hearing, is there anyone here for public hearing? See no one, we'll close public hearing. Questions called, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number five of the agenda, public hearing, planning board recommendation to Annex 3201 Reed Street, and rezoned from Putnam County C3 Commercial General to City C2 Intensive Commercial, Commercial Malta Association of Palacka Gerald Donnelly Agent, VFW. Item A, annexation ordinance, second reading.
Ordinance of the City of Palacka, Florida, annexing into the corporate limits of the City of Palacka, Florida. Certain adjacent territory identified as 3201 Reed Street, located in Section 2, Township 10, South Range 26 East, public records of Putnam County, Florida, contiguous, continuous to the boundaries of the City of Palacka, and providing an effective date.
So, move. Second. There's a motion on the floor, and a second. Is there anyone here for public hearing? See no one, we'll close public hearing. Questions? Public hearing's closed, questions called, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item B, land use amendment ordinance. For adoption.
An ordinance of the City of Palacka, Florida, providing that the official zoning map of the City of Palacka, Florida, be amended from Putnam County C3 Commercial General to City.
It's the one that says the, at the future land use map.
Of the adopted, uh, I'm sorry, the future land use map of the Adopted Comprehensive Plan be amended with respect to the following parcel of land, less than 10 acres in size, from Putnam County, U.S. Urban Services, to commercial, for 3201 Reed Street property located in Section 2, Township 10, South Range 26 East, providing for separability, and providing an effective date.
So, move. Second. Just one second.
U.S. Urban Services, rezoning C3 to C2.
So, it's on the flume?
Yeah, on the flume, it's U.S. 2, yeah.
Okay, so we're good?
Yes.
All right. Any further discussion? Question, second, questions? Hold on, we're not for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? See no one, we'll close public hearing. And just for the record, the only question I had was that, we were moving from, from the, from the future land use amendment, it's different than what we're getting from the rezoning, we're going to urban, it's moving from urban services on the future land use map to commercial, and we're still fine, because everything is proper. Any other? Motion was made by...
Borum.
No, no, McCaskill, and a second by Borum. Any further discussion?
Question.
Questions called by Commissioner Borum, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item C, rezoning ordinance, second reading for adoption.
An ordinance in the City of Palacka, Florida, providing that the official zoning map of the rezoned, zoning map of the City of Palacka, Florida, to be amended from Putnam County C3 Commercial General to City C2 Intensive Commercial, for all the following properties, 3201 Reed Street, Section 2, Township 10, South Range 26 East, providing for separability, and providing an effective date.
So, move. Second, with motion by Commissioner Borum, and a second by Commissioner Campbell, without a floor for public hearing, is there anyone here for public hearing? See no one, we'll close public hearing. Any further discussion on the motion? Questions called by Commissioner McCaskill, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously, thank you. Moving on to item seven of the agenda, which is city manager and administrative reports.
Six, we got item six.
Oh, item six, I'm trying to get you out of here fast. Item six, planning board recommendation to Annex 8408 Lee Terrace and rezoned from Putnam County, R1A Residential Single Family.
An ordinance of the City of Palatka, Florida, annexing into the corporate limits of the City of Palatka, Florida, certain adjacent territory identified as 8408 Lee Terrace, located in Section 13, Township 10, south, range 26 east, public records of Putnam County, Florida, continuous to the boundaries of the boundaries of the City of Palatka, and providing an effective date.
So move. There's a motion on the floor and a second. Is there anyone here for public hearing? See no one. We'll close public hearing. Any further discussion?
Question.
Questions called. All in favor, say aye. Opposed motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item B, future land use amendment ordinance for adoption.
An ordinance of the City of Palatka, Florida, providing that the future land use map of the Adopted Comprehensive Plan be amended with respect to the following parcel of land, less than 10 acres in size, to Putnam County Urban Services to city residential low density. For 8408 Lee Terrace, property located in Section 13, Township 10, south, range 26 east, providing for separability and providing an effective date.
So move.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and there's a second. Anyone here for public hearing? See no one. We'll close public hearing. Any further discussion? Questions called by Commissioner Borum. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item three, rezoning ordinance, second reading for adoption.
An ordinance of the City of Palatka, Florida, providing that the Putnam County R-1A residential family to R-1A single-family residential for the following property, 8408 Lee Terrace, Section 13, Township 10, south, range 26 east, providing for separability and providing an effective date.
So move.
Second.
Just for record, we're providing that the official zoning map of the City of Palatka, Florida, be amended. There's a motion on the floor and a second. Is there anyone here for public hearing? See no one. We'll close public hearing. Any further discussion? Questions called by Commissioner Borum. Again, all in favor, say aye. Opposed motion carries unanimously. Moving on to City Manager and Administrative Reports. Chief Shaw.
I just wanted to touch bases with you all on this weekend's events, upcoming and next Wednesday's event. This weekend, on Saturday, we will be having the Fall Festival, which will be hosted downtown. I told you earlier this month that I would bring back the times and any other additional information that might be on it. The event will be hosted at the Riverfront at 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and we will have other events or other entertainment that's going to be included in the downtown area. Before we do the Fall Festival, we'll also be having the Pink Walk to recognize for our cancer survivors. It will start at the courthouse, and then we will end back at, for the first year, we actually will end, and the march will drop off into our Fall Festival. So we're really looking forward to that, provided all of you guys with the flyers that details that information on as well. And then, next Wednesday on Halloween, we'll be having our Trunk or Tree event, our third annual Trunk or Tree event. It will start at 5:00 p.m., which is shortly after the Boo on the Avenue is due to close. We did notice that last year, one of the takeaways from last year's event was that we had a gap in between times, which didn't allow for as many people to partake in the event right after the Boo on the Avenue. So we went ahead and we adjusted the timeframe, and it should, once again, flow smoothly. We anticipate a very large crowd for that event. Again, the times are 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., and it will be held at the Mall, Mall Park lot.
How large, Chief?
We are anticipating anywhere from 2,500 to 3,000 people.
And who has the most, what, again?
Commissioner Borum has the most.
Do you have any questions on either one of those events? Just a quick question on the Pink Walk. Are we starting at 10 o'clock this year for the walk?
No, the Pink Walk starts at 8 o'clock, 8:30. It's leaving at 8:30.
Eight, eight o'clock.
So you're starting to form up?
Sorry, it starts at 8:00 every year. I'm just trying to make sure.
Okay.
I just want my face back.
So the Pink Walk starts at 8:00, and then the remainder of the events go from 10:00 to 2:00 in the Riverfront, immediately following the Pink Walk.
That's correct.
Yes, sir. It'll probably be closer to 9:00.
I want my same spot, and he's asking where it is. That's my business. I'm sorry if you didn't remember too bad.
And that's for the trunk or tree?
That's for trunk or tree. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner Borum has every chance.
Mr. Campbell, I already got you. We've booked you over there. I got your slot.
Yes, sir.
I knew it was coming.
I was just like, hey. I went closely alongside Captain Luke. We make runs to Walmart.
Hey, there should be those. I saw all that come through.
We think that. We always think that. We thought that last year.
Keep going.
We got another carload.
We seemed to run out every...
Yeah, always right there.
All right. So again, thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Captain Bradford. I want you to top that.
I can't top that, sir. I will say that we did put our new engine in service. Engine 2-1 is in service. Engine 2-1 is in service on the road, answering calls. It's fantastic. So thank you, guys, very much for that new truck, man. It's great. It really is great. I don't know if you need all the particulars, but it's got a 1,500 GPM pump. We already pumped a carburetor with it. It's just fantastic.
Come on up. Share with...
I brought my engineer with you.
All right. Come on up, represent.
Barker.
Barker thought he was getting out of there.
No, he should be doing it, because he was probably one of the most happy people.
He's a detail man.
The truck is beautiful. It really is. The paint scheme's wonderful. Fully outfitted with equipment, tools. It's answering calls like it should. Runs great down the road. We couldn't ask for a nicer piece of apparatus to operate on a daily.
What was the problem with the old engine that they replaced?
Engine 2-2, which was a 1996...
Say that again, please.
Engine 2-2 is a 1996. Life expectancy on apparatus is about 10 years. So we've kept it on the road. The sister truck also, which was a 97, is out of service with engine problems. So...
Came just in time?
Came just in time. They were really on their last leg. Engine 2-1 lost a pump, which you don't have a fire truck without a pump. So the apparatus was long overdue, and we are thankful, thankful to you guys for really pulling it together.
Thank you, guys, for the work that you do. In the community, both as firefighters and as a fire union, I'm working in the community and giving back to our young people. And so we definitely appreciate you, guys, for the work that you've done. And we're... And the most important part of all of this is this is an opportunity for citizens to see those fire assessment dollars actually going to work so that it saves lives.
I can give you just a few more things if you want to know about it. It's got some, it's got some really state-of-the-art equipment as far as air pack pumps. I know that doesn't seem like much, but in old days, we just kind of put our bottles in the truck, and we just kind of pull them out and they went. These have inertia locks, so they keep us in the seat. You give a gentle tug, and the pack comes out, so you're not fumbling around with straps and buckles and things that break. I know that you guys have never been trapped inside of a fire truck, but it does happen.
Saves time.
It saves time, we're faster, the truck is more efficient. It's got every kind of seatbelt warning, so it's making sure we're wearing our seatbelt as we're going to calls. Truck camera for safety holiday.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. Truck has a backup camera, which is standard now.
Save your safety holiday.
Save your safety holiday.
And your water level lights.
And your tank water level lights, which seems to be, you wouldn't think that that's a big deal. It's a huge deal for us when the guy that's running the call can actually look out on the truck and make sure that things are going the way they should. So they write LEDs, I mean, we can light up the world. It's a great truck.
And your doors don't open when you... Your door don't automatically open, right?
The doors lock and close the way they should.
Another example of us putting city dollars to work for you, so that we have better conditions and we can better serve our community. Definitely appreciate you. And you can carry all the things you... Just about everything you need without having to bring an additional truck.
Yes, sir. Yes, it carries... That truck is outfitted with rope. I don't know if you guys are familiar, but we are a USR team, with county's USR team, the city's USR team. So it carries rope gear, extrication gear, it carries cribbing. And it carries just about everything by the kitchen sink.
And I give you my kitchen sink, so we got this meeting.
Well, I have seen it rolling down the road, and it's very impressive.
Don't worry about it. Chief will be back up here next month talking about his cars. He's got nine cars coming, so we definitely appreciate you.
Thanks, guys.
We're going to keep him out the maintenance shop. So thank you again, guys.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Yule. Anyone win this week?
No, you win our new class.
Just a couple things report. Last week, last Thursday, Judge Newfield, chairman of the advisory board, traveled to Orlando and attended the National Business Aircraft Association Convention. Just an unbelievable convention, the who's who of aviation. And we walked from booth to booth with pamphlets that the vice mayor would be very proud of, trying to sell the airport in Palatka to potential businesses. And we walked from 9:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m., and we still did not get through every single booth. We stopped once to eat lunch and just kept moving. It was just, I don't know if you've ever been to one, had to a convention center, but it's unbelievable. So hopefully we'll get some, get something out, out of, just kind of the convention we probably should go to every year, trying to market the airport. Number two, this airplane landed at the airport yesterday, and it flew in from Latrobe, Pennsylvania.
We're on the south of Pittsburgh.
Had an unusual number on it, November 1, AP. When I did a little research, November 1, Arnold Palmer.
Was the Arnold Palmer on there?
Arnold Palmer owned this aircraft.
Cool.
But he passed a number years ago. So it belongs to an energy company in Latrobe, Pennsylvania, which maybe is one of Arnold's subsidiary. He was an illegal businessman and aviator. So anyway, it's still sitting out in the airport at drive-by. Think it'll be here till tomorrow. Thank you.
You're here, one.
And the gentleman is okay. Had an asshole, tripped out on the flight.
Mr. Robinson. Got anything for us? We have anything open to the city?
CDL driver still.
If you want to come up for a second, Mr. Robinson, tell us a little bit about that wage increase.
We saw, I saw an interesting, well, an impressive email from you, and I was just smiling when I read it.
Thank you. It's okay. We love to hear from you.
My impressive email?
Yes.
It was very...
It was awesome.
Deborah Robinson, Human Resources. The email that they're referring to is the increases that we have with our employees who were making less than $11. We brought them all up to $11. Our CDL drivers are now in a compatible wage, whether making $14 from the $11 to $12 that they were making. We also had a 4% increase across the board for those who did not fall into those other categories. We had a couple of policy changes as refers to vacations. Instead of accruing their vacations all at one time at the end of their year, they're now accruing vacation on a monthly basis. So it gives them the opportunity to have a balanced home and work life, so they're not waiting to try to schedule those vacation times. So that's a good increase for them, good benefit for them. And we also added the tickets at work, which is another free incentive that we have for the employees, where they're able to buy tickets as it refers to football, basketball, movies, anything, lodging, just like logging on and taking benefits of the savings that come across for them. And that's free to everybody at work.
Thank you. Glad you came up.
Anything else?
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that report. Awesome report.
Your vote.
All right. And just for the record, spoke to President Pickens, and they are actively, they're looking at their, they've gone through and done an audit of their system to see if they can match what the city's doing. They've done it for a number of their employees already, but they are looking, they've got a handful of employees who don't meet our criteria, and they're going to pull them up. President Pickens has accepted the challenge from the college, and they're going to pull their employee, their minimum employees up that meet the, that meet the criteria as well.
So we sent the standard around.
They've got some general maintenance employees that start out more, but the employees that don't, that aren't, they're going to, they're going to accept the challenge, and they're going to move forward. And there are a couple others that are going to be reported back soon. And so again, we're moving forward in the community. Ms. Becker, what are we not sending?
I'm updating today.
She's staying on that every other time.
Mr. Robinson.
I'm impressed.
Ms. Triggers.
Thank you. And I've got Mr. Martin next time, too, because he couldn't be here tonight. Wanted to meet Patty Ryan. She is our new building, is our new permit department and zoning tech. She comes to us with four years of experience in planning, building, and zoning. She has done a terrific job jumping in and getting acclimated to the job. There's a lot to it, and she's done a great job. She's practicing set up tonight for the planning board. So, and it takes a while to get going on those annexations and flumes, because there's a lot of, you know, yeah, but once, after you get used to it, they just roll off your tongue. We, this is our first two weeks of the new permitting process, where we have transferred all of our building permitting services over to the county. We've had, you know, as with everything, there were a few bumps in the road, and a few bugs to shake out of the lens, but things are going much more smoothly now. And so we're looking forward to a good process on that. I have also distributed Halloween movie night information that Putnam Edge dropped off. This is tomorrow night. They're going to be showing a scary movie. Tickets are $5 for students, $7 for non-students. That includes adults. Movie starts at 6, ends at 8, and the community is invited.
And I'm going to go to the, what, their, like, LPN school, or what is it?
The program?
Yes, the program. Yes, the raising funds for the program. Oh. Yeah. So it goes to a good cause. I have distributed a Palatka Daily News editorial that appeared in yesterday's newspaper, Our View, called Perception Not Reality, but Local Assessment, which is a really good editorial. So thanks to the editorial staff, which talks about Putnam Countyans and Palatkas being grateful for what we have. And there is a list here of things that just Mr. Studer in his talks with the folks that he's been meeting with, kind of put a list together. We can add to this list. And he has, the Daily News is now doing, running a series of articles. This was the first one that they're running in the newspaper on Mr. Studer and his talks. And he's very inspirational. It's the first time I heard him talk. I know that some of you have been to some of his talks before, and I'm guessing that maybe it's kind of the same folks that go over and over. So I spoke with him after he was finished, and I asked him if he would possibly come and do a workshop with us here. Much of what he talked about was how to rejuvenate downtown and get that rebirth going. I know that Mayor Hill has been meeting with him a lot, spent the day with him the other day. And he said that he would if we would put a caravan together and go visit Pensacola and I know that Mayor Hill has been meeting with him a lot, spent the day with him the other day, and he said that he would if we would put a caravan together and go visit Pensacola and let him give us the tour. So, um, that we would have to take a look at, but, um, I thought that it would be good if he came to the city of Palaca. We held a workshop with him, invited the downtown merchants and the city residents to come and meet him one-on-one and hear him speak, because he's a very talented.
Dotting Hart, who's his publicist, has also agreed, uh, to come to Palaca, uh, pro bono, and to give, um, a workshop on imaging and what we can do to improve the image of the community, and also how we can better put out public information. And so she's going to do that, and we're going to coordinate that tomorrow.
And imaging starts from within the community. We need to be proud of what we've got here, and, uh, have the biggest messages. And, uh, I think that's it.
That's it? Two more days to glass purple. Get a few more days to glass purple. So, uh, Commissioner Borum.
Well, just, we'd just like to, uh, offer the community to come out. A lot of time, people say we don't have a whole lot to do here in Palaca, but, uh, as you heard, a number of people that came up front will have a number of things for the community to come out and be involved in. Uh, again, I don't want to rehash it, but we have a number of these things, and I think it'd be very important. I know people around the community are always saying, well, hey, I would have known, I wish I'd have known about X, Y, and Z event, whatever. So I want to, I guess, challenge or ask Betsy to work with whoever it may be within the, within the county, um, to develop a, uh, a citywide or countywide calendar of events, because we do have a rich number of, uh, events that we have that can, um, certainly benefit our, our community. I don't want to rehash all the different things, but I, I have four things here that we're going to be having within the next couple of days, and then we have future events. So, um, looking forward to having a, a real big, uh, community-wide calendar. That's all I have.
Commissioner McCaskill.
I, I just want to say, um, I'm excited to see all of the events that are taking place this upcoming weekend. However, I would apologize, um, in advance, um, of my absence. I'm the facilitator for the Florida Education Association Teacher Leaders Program, and we meet once, once a month on a Saturday, and this is our Saturday coming up. So I hope everyone comes out anyway and enjoy, and eat enough candy and have enough fun for me. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell.
Um, not too much, just want to say kudos to the Lee Conley House and everyone that took part in the domestic bombing event. Um, the other day, I had the opportunity to, um, go and show face prior to going down to the DPI Forum, but from what I've seen and what I've heard after the event, it was definitely want to, um, remember multiple survivors, um, stepping up and telling their stories, um, definitely, definitely. And we're committed on a city level, and I'm committed to do what I can to, to continue to the efforts of the Lee Conley House Board. So thank you to the board, thank you to everyone that was involved in that. Um, as we know, um, early voting started today, um, get out and vote.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
That's all, Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
I would like for us to remember that one of our priorities was business incentivism, and I would like to see us get started on getting it going so that we can, since we're getting businesses opening up in the downtown and around, have that energy to help people start and learn how to keep their businesses going. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Um, just got another appointment. President Leo Longworth of the Florida League of Cities just, just appointed me to the Advocacy Committee for the Florida League of Cities. Uh, the purpose of the committee is strengthening relationships with state officials. Uh, so again, uh, the city of Palaca's commission is continuing to be, um, appointed to various committees within the Florida League of Cities, four hundred and thirteen cities. At this point, every member of this committee sits in some representative capacity on a board of directors within the Florida League of Mayors, and some of us sit on multiple boards, uh, within the Florida League of Cities and the Florida League of Mayors, uh, the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust Fund, um, and the General Board for the Florida League of Cities as well. And so, um, this, this commission is bringing recognition for Palaca, um, throughout the state, throughout the country with the fast fly-ins, and also with the National League of Cities. And I think that's something, um, that has been, that's unprecedented for this community to have as many active members sitting on various boards. Um, when I got here, there were two members that were sitting on boards, and now we're at five. And so, um, I'm happy that Palaca's taken the lead within the state of Florida. Great activities going on, we got another fishing tournament starting up tomorrow downtown Palaca. Uh, we've got other events that are going on throughout the community. Um, be aware that there have been some shootings within the community, uh, there was one murder. And, uh, as a community, we stood in prayer on last Saturday, praying for peace, uh, praying for responsiveness throughout the community, and that everyone continually become engaged and take charge of their community and, 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 and listen to people and, and be mindful of what others are going through to make sure, um, that these tragic accidents don't happen anymore. But as a community, we stand together, we stand unified, um, and we'll continually, um, stand in prayer, we'll continually be engaged with Chief Shaw and the Police Department. They've done a great job, um, through their investigative process with these events, um, and we're going to continually move forward. On a positive note, uh, there's still more in tune. Quick, Studer coming to this community has been a wonderful event, two days with Mr. Studer, three days with Mr. Studer, uh, really discussing, uh, putting together an economic development plan for downtown Palaca, having that be the focus. We've had a number of our, um, business leaders who are in other parts of the community, excited about coming to Palaca. Uh, they're excited about our plans as it relates to the Depot District and our Brownfields Assessment, when you look at our intermodal transportation hub, new train station, and Eleven Street District. And those are all things that we need to look at, because we're, we're revitalizing Palaca in various places. Another two hundred thousand dollars from the National Park Services for the Booker Park, uh, Aklam, the Booker Park and the John Henry Paul Mois Project. And so, progress takes place, uh, in Palaca, we are still, um, spending less than we budget on an annual basis, putting money in reserves, and we are filling, we are providing equipment and better working conditions for, um, all of our departments, the Police Department, the Fire Department, uh, both have new equipment coming, as well as the golf course performing very well, and we're getting ready to move into, um, the busy holiday season within the community.